I'd like to welcome everybody to the Abington Middle High School Library for the meeting of the school committee here on Tuesday, January third, two thousand and twenty-three. Just a note before we start, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four public budget hearing will be held no earlier than seven fifteen P M. tonight. So that's just a note through the public budget hearing. Before we start, I'd like to ask everybody to please stand for the fudge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd ask everybody to like to speak here in the visitors before we get started in our meeting. Mrs. Baldwin, yours is gonna be part of the agenda itself, okay? If that's what the topic's about, I'm assuming, so that has its own, that'll be for you to speak about everything, okay? Anybody else like to speak at this time? Just restate your name and address, please, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I tend to talk to you. Hello, my name is Nicole Emily. I live at sixteen Palm Street. I'm a mother of four children, a concerned parent. I'm not a bigot, a homophobe, anti-LGBTQ, or a fascist. I'm just a parent who, like all of you, want to do what's best for our kids. That being said, if we didn't have a shared middle school, high school library, this book would be a non-issue for me. My issue and concern is because the two schools do share a library. There's honestly no way for one librarian to ensure middle school children don't access books and content that's not appropriate for them. Of course, the librarian can ensure the middle school children don't check it out, but there's no way to guarantee they can't access it and read it in the library. While the book does have a lot of useful information, it's unfortunate that includes a dating app how-to and directs children and young adults to utilize this app for sex and hookups. This is extremely dangerous for our kids. I could rattle off statistics, but I'm assuming as parents, you all know that there's already proven dangers with those apps, and I just don't think our children should have access to it. I didn't even personally realize the library was shared until all of this was brought up, and now that I do know, I think this is a huge design flaw and proving to be somewhat problematic. So because of this, I hope you all vote to remove this book until there's a solution that guarantees only high schoolers can have access to it. Perhaps for now, we could remove the physical book from the separate but physically shared library and offer the ebook to high schoolers. I also wanna say I'd be willing to purchase a replacement book that provides the same support and information found in this book as gay and donate it to the high school library. I've reached out to a very close friend who's a college professor and holds a doctorate in human sexuality studies. And although this friend likely couldn't disagree with me more on just about everything, she did agree this book should not be available to middle schoolers. I asked her for recommendations that compare to this book as gay, but aren't as graphic and don't include a how-to on sex and dating apps. If and when she provides recommendations, I'd be happy to share them, and like I mentioned, I'd purchase something to donate in place of the book. Last thing, I know some of the responses of that, maybe not here, but publicly have been, well, why, why, why this book? If we remove this book, then remove all Shakespeare and everything else because Shakespeare is dirty. But I think that we can all, common sense, agree that comparing Romeo and Juliet in the library is not the same. We can all agree that "graze on my lips, and if those hills be dry, stray lower where the pleasant fountains lie" is not comparable to a middle school reading. As with handjobs and breakfast eggs, all men like their blowjobs served in a different way. Thank you for listening, and I appreciate everything you guys do and the hard job that you have and the decision you have to make.
Thank you, Ms. Emily. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, seeing nobody. We're gonna move on to the first order of the reading and approval of record of minutes from the December twentieth meeting. And after the committee gets a chance to do the motion for a motion to approve or not approve. Oh, just, and just to be clear, this was regarding, this was our virtual meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a virtual meeting that was held on December twentieth. That the juxtap, the, the bulk of which, almost all of it was regarding approval of contracts with collective bargaining and non-collective bargaining cases. It's not our last meeting in November, so.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Um, up next, the appeal hearing on the book. This book is gay, as described by policy K E C, challenge educational materials. Um, Mrs. Baldwin, I'll ask you to, um, Mrs. Baldwin, I'll ask you to go to the podium. I mean, you can, um, speak about your reasons for the appeal. Um, just to be clear, this is an appeal hearing by our policy of the decision made by the superintendent to leave the book, this book is gay, in the, in the high school section of the library.
Um, can I, excuse me?
Yes.
Are, we're supposed to have a meeting at seven fifteen? Do you think that's gonna interfere with this?
It can't start before seven fifteen, so.
Can we go on to other things? I, I don't know. I'm just using this, like, thinking of a suggestion because it really gives her, like, nine minutes.
No, no, it gives her as long as she wants. We can't stop the budget hearing before seven fifteen. That's all it is, yeah.
Um, before I start, I just wanna let you know that, um, there was a petition that went out today. And there were a hundred and seven names on the petition already. I won't read the petition because basically it reiterates what I have to say, but I will email it to Mr. Schaefer and Chris, okay?
Okay, thank you.
As the school committee, you serve as the gatekeepers overseeing the content of material presented to minor children. You've taken on very serious responsibility in protecting the best interest of parents and students. There are many who have had backlash and others who expect more of the same for speaking out in concern for their children. That is absolutely reprehensible. Anyone who cannot reason as a mature adult without calling names and defaming others should be disregarded. I ask for you not to hear my argument with the purpose of ammunition to disagree, but with the students in mind, please listen with your hearts. They should be why we're all here, less about peacemakers. The discussion today, as it pertains to minor children, is specifically about the book, This Book is Gay, which is currently placed in the high school section of the library. Is this a positive or a negative, valuable or detrimental? All things permissible, but not all things are profitable. I'm not suggesting book banning, but rather evaluation for age appropriateness. This is not in any way a discussion on sex education, heterosexuality or homosexuality, but rather the content of pornography, which is offensive to common decency. This book contains the dating app for the purpose of sexual hookups that's potentially very dangerous. It's instructional, explicit. It's a how-to sex manual with graphic depictions for sex for the purpose of promoting sex for adolescents and has no connotation of any kind of committed emotional relationships, just using another person as a body for selfish gratification, which raises a lot of red flags. It's porn, plain and simple. We have rightly made laws pertaining to the best interest of minors who are still developing mentally and emotionally, like laws on working, voting, driving, alcohol, X-rated films, books, in an effort to protect them. The definition of harmful to minors is if it is obscene or taken as a whole, describes and represents nudity, sexual conduct, or sexual excitement so as to appeal predominantly to the prurient interest of minors, is patently contrary to prevailing standards of adults in the country as to be suitable material for minors, and lacks any serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value for minors. This is a perfect description of this book. Minors are incapable of consent. They are impressionable, naive, vulnerable, and need to be mentored with respect and dignity. They rely on you to set a safe culture in the school, one that does not impose, lead, or direct to an ideology. There is much controversy and concern by parents all over this country. That's telling. So I have a question. Is there anything in this book that's positive? To me, that's an invalid question. If we are enticed to consume something, but there is part of it that's rancid, that makes it contaminated, not enriching. Pornography has long been condemned and legally prescribed in the belief that it depraves and corrupts minors and adults, and that it can lead to sex crimes. It pollutes the mind. While views have changed over time, the only remaining taboo that is universally accepted is the condemnation of child pornography and the distribution of it. Studies now prove that pornography and other sexualized material have the capacity to alter drastically. The unit uses brain chemistry and functionality. They are impacted by mental, emotional, and spiritual effects of viewing pornography. These effects lead to a lack of sexual intimacy. Obscenity or hardcore pornography is not protected under the First Amendment. Forty states have banned it, and there are laws in Massachusetts as well. For the time, for time's sake and clarity, I mention these terms according to the dictionary and can define them for you without reimagining the terms for the sake of conversation if need be. These pertinent words are obscenity, disseminate, harmful to minors, lascivious intent, matter, sexual contact, and sexual excitement. Now, how do those words fit into an educational setting? The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and critically. But education which starts with efficiency may prove to be the greatest menace to society. The most dangerous criminal may be a man gifted with reason but no morals. We must remember that intelligence is not enough. Intelligence plus character, that's the goal of true education. The mission of the Department of Education is for student achievement and preparedness for global competitiveness. Nowhere does education define itself as having the necessity of teaching lewd, obscene, immoral, depraved ideologies. Material that pollutes the mind and the soul of a minor is not beneficial. Parents who want this book have the freedom to pick it up, advance a noble for twelve ninety-nine and give it to their child. But to have it available for all students comes at a much higher price for parents who have the freedom to protect the innocence of their children, and it would override their consent. The question is, what types of book selections do you believe is inappropriate for a school setting? Where do you draw the line? How far is too far? This book lacks any serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value. By virtue of placing materials in the school, gives it validation. Healthy boundaries in life keep us safe. The bar raised by both parents in schools should be to stay true to yourself while living with morals that encourage positivity and self-esteem. Both the school library and the curriculum needs to be transparent so that we, the custodians in authority, can see what our children are being exposed to as well as the ideology behind it. I have read the book. In order to qualify your decision, of course, you would also need to read it for yourself. If your decision is to justify the complete content of the book as being advantageous in education to us students, I ask for each of you to publicly declare, while reasoning individually, while quoting excerpts from the book, using its terms including fisting, fellatio, glory hole, grinder, rimming, scat, dildo, and water sports, golden shower, candies, bummie, and why you think promiscuity is more beneficial than minority. There is an agenda to sexualize our students that's masquerading as education. Their efforts seek to normalize all manner of sexual expression and behaviors in the next generation by spreading dangerous and misleading messages layered with values that many parents oppose. Sex education used to be taught in health class, but increasingly is coming up in history, English and science, as an effort to cover up and get past the parents. That's devious. So I have two things to ask. One, to recognize and enforce the parents' rights, who would teach their children their values, and that is exclusively our sphere of influence. As we raise up a child in the way that they should go, they won't depart from it. It is your jurisdiction to review all curriculum books from the approved list prior to allowing them in the school library. Please vote as our school board to remove the library, all materials that are leading, sexualizing, teaching explicit pornographic constructions, whether heterosexual or homosexual. These should be nowhere in the school. I ask you, gatekeepers, to close the gate to ensure safety inside the school while preventing corruption from the outside to protect our children. And I close with a warning from scripture. If anyone causes one of these little ones to stumble, it would be better for them if a large millstone were hung around their neck and they were thrown into the sea. Thank you.
Mrs. Baldwin, can I ask you just to stay at the podium in case anybody has any questions?
Yeah.
Um, before, before we do that, there's just a couple items I wanna hit. First, I wanna thank you for following the policy as laid out in our policy guide on the challenging educational materials. Um, this would be the last step of it, so thank you for following that policy. While I, I'm absolutely entitled to your opinion on things, I just need to state that though your opinions that were stated tonight not necessarily the opinions of any members of the school committee or the administration. Um, and lastly, before we, before I throw it to everybody, I just wanna let everybody know that what this vote on tonight is, it's the overt, it's the appeal of the decision made by the superintendent to leave This Book is Gay in the library. Our, our motion, our vote will be on whether or not to reverse that decision or not. So at that time, I ask if anybody in the committee has any questions, Ms. Baldwin.
I don't have a question. I just have a statement.
Okay.
I'd just like to say that every single teacher and administrator I know and have ever worked with have the best interests of kids at heart. They are not trying to sexualize our children, and I cannot stand for that statement.
Actually, there've been plenty of, of teachers and administrators and regular people that have gone beyond what they should with children. It happens, it's happened here, it's happened in other places, so not condoning. I'm just saying, like, she's not absolutely wrong in what she's saying, so.
Does anybody else on the committee have any, um, hate mail to ask Ms. Baldwin about regarding her appeal?
I'm fairly certain I made my statement.
Okay.
The last go-round.
Did anyone read the book?
Three times.
Neither.
Nope.
Julie?
No.
So how can we vote on something with an attitude like that?
I'm not voting on removing the book. I'm voting on an appeal of Peter's decision.
But it still should be the book, though, right?
Yeah, my life just hasn't had time to, so.
I mean, a number of people I know and respect have read the book, um, and I quote them to them about it, so.
My wife has, yeah. My wife has. I talked to her about it.
Many other things in the world. I, you know, sometimes allow people who have better knowledge than me to, to do things, and since I made their opinions, this is, this is one of those. So I respect everyone's opinion, um, who has read it.
It was a committee of seven people who were tasked with reading and discussing the book. We did reach out to somebody to find out, um, if there were books out there that could easily replace this one, and we're still waiting on an answer. There really was no direct alternative given. I feel like to come back and ask this committee to overturn the work done by another committee sends a bad message to the people who took the time to meet, to discuss, to create the opinion in the first place.
And we've got all these books in the library, and I think possibly have read all of them, so I do trust the people that were tasked on this committee, um, and I respect their decisions.
Can I res, can I respond?
Yes.
Um, first of all, when I sent, um, when I challenged the book and it was going to the review board, I had to send in what I had to say about it, and one question was, did you read the book? Well, I too had heard the discussion, which was more than enough for me. But if I was gonna challenge a book, then I felt like I needed to read it, so I did.
That's correct.
So if I needed to read it, and you people are in charge, in order for you to make a qualified decision, you need to read it too.
I'm not challenging the book, though, and I'm trusting the qualified decisions of the people who are chosen on the committee. So I think it's a little different, but I hear what you're saying. You have the right to feel that way.
So the committee can't make a bad decision? Excuse me, excuse me, we're having our own session. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
The other thing I wanted to say is that these are our children, and the school board was elected to represent us.
Completely agree with that. I think we all can completely agree that we represent the entire.
Right, everybody, not just that it's a disgrace.
Of course, so there's people on both sides.
Yes.
What we're talking about, what we're talking about here is values and principles and who's getting exposed. So in, in my estimation, while we all have freedom, our freedom ends what it impedes upon another person's freedom. So this book is impeding upon other children's freedom when their parents.
Removing it is impeding on other children's freedom as well.
No, because the parents have access to the book. Here's your book. Read it.
Parents can tell if it's not read it.
It, it's called access, and the school is validating anything that they have up. Anything they put up is a validation to these children, you know? You're the authority. They're, they're depending on you. So it has to be what's the utmost best for these children, and they are minors, and this obscenity rules for minors. Adults can do what they want.
We ask for the numbers, and whether I, whether I should have my child read it or not, or any, first off, it's not being taught. It's sitting on a shelf, number one. Number two, the age of sexual consent in the state of Massachusetts is sixteen. That is the legal age of, of sexual consent. Sixty percent of our student population in the high school level is at or above the age of sexual consent. This book is speaking to something that these students are legally allowed to engage in. That is why this book is here. It's not telling somebody how they have to go about it, whether or not they should go about it.
Well, but see, you haven't read the book, so you.
Excuse me, I'm speaking.
You can't address that.
I am speaking, Mrs. Baldwin.
Ms. Baldwin, you don't know if she's read it or not. First of all, she has read the book.
I have read it.
She was my, our member on the review committee.
Okay. And I have listened to the audiobook to be sure that the words I were, that I was listening to, that I was hearing it the way that the author intended it to be heard. I'm not saying I loved every page of this book. I'm not saying I loved every aspect of this book. What I'm saying is there is value to be had in this book. There's also value to the certain students who might want to read it. If someone doesn't want to read it, they don't have to. But I'm not entirely sure why we keep coming back to this discussion. It went to a committee, the committee made a proposal, and that's what happened. And now people are saying, school committee sits here for two reasons, policy and budget. I'm not entirely sure why we are being told that we should have all read the book from beginning to end when there was a committee that in fact did do that, and across the board, people agreed, all right, maybe the tone wasn't always what we wanted. Maybe it was a little jarring, but you know what? The benefits to having kids who need access to this book, having access to this book, is important. And why would we wanna take away something from a child just because somebody else is uncomfortable with it? I'm not entirely sure why we should be doing that. Can we move to vote on this, please?
I'm gonna give, uh, so this was, so this mem, this part of the agenda was an appeal on the hearing. Mrs. Baldwin, I had every right for everything, and I hope you, I let you go, let you say everything that you did need to say. Um, sir, if you have something you wanna add, I'm gonna ask you to state your name and address, and I'm gonna ask you to make it brief and not address it through Mrs. Baldwin, but to the committee.
Sure. My name is Tony, ninety-eight Temple Street. So, um, I read this book myself. I found it to be delightful. The equating this with pornography is just wholly disingenuous. It is not a how-to book on how to have sex. It is a, an acknowledgement of what the reality is for children. It is a guide to how to be safe to do, to do these things. The part about, if we think kids don't know that there are apps for everything, then we're being totally naive and dis, or at least disingenuous. They know that there are meetup apps. It's, the whole point of the part of the app book, the part of the book about the app is for kids to be safe. That's what everything about it is. It's to, to use proper protection, use, it's, um, so, but also the, the kids who need this book the most are the ones that their parent, whose parents won't buy this book for them, won't let them have access to it. I am not asking you, so, thank you.
I, I'm sorry. I don't understand why you think that every child is sexual, because they're not. I know plenty of children that aren't.
I didn't say that. So if you could please, if you could please just address what I actually said. It's the reality that sexuality is a part of everyone's life.
You want to sexualize it. Like, there are plenty of parts of this book that are sexual, that encourage people to.
I will not stand for you misrepresenting me.
You don't have to see it for anything.
You're misrepresenting me. You're misrepresenting me in this thing every once in a while, guys. You're misrepresenting me.
Guys, guys, please.
Hello, I'm allowed to speak.
You just don't have a listen. That's the big problem.
I just wanted to address another point. This process that you had of the review committee were all school people.
That's, I mean, the policy was followed before you.
That's, yeah. You have a policy, they're all school people. Totally left the parents out of the discussion.
There was a, there was a parent involved, a member of the school council.
A parent who maybe was far against, but. Right. I understand, but what I'm saying is, as parents, we're responsible. Our kids may go and do things that we don't want them to do, but I'm not gonna hand it to them. The school committee is responsible to the parents and what their wishes are. And at the original meeting, there were quite a few parents who were totally against it.
Agreed.
So, yes, there's some far it, but there's access in the town library. There's access at the bookstore. We have freedom until we impede upon someone else's freedom. That's where our freedom stops. That's, that's my only thing.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin.
I think this committee represents, I think this committee represents pretty much every possible viewpoint out there in the town, and I'd like to move this if we can.
Yeah, I mean, if that's the case, I'd be looking for a motion.
Well, then I haven't gotten a chance to see.
I, yeah, I.
Not you. I'm just saying, like, everyone's asking for a motion.
Go ahead, make, go ahead, whatever you want, yeah.
Um, so I am very concerned that the book is, well, as I've said, I understand being in the high school side of the library, but we do have access, that these middle schoolers have access, fifth and sixth graders, ten-year-olds, to that side anytime they want. Um, there's no restriction on it, like, people can walk over to that side at any moment, and not everyone is always here in the library to, you know, watch the kids and making sure that they're not going over to that other side. So is there a way that we can, like, put a petition in the library or something? Would that be helpful so that, you know, kids can't access that side?
It's quite a distance from where the middle school kids would have access to it. It's difficult.
But they don't, because in the mill, there was all kinds of books here that are on display at once in a line, so.
And that was shifted as a result of this discussion.
Right, but is that gonna be shifted for now on forever?
Yes.
Okay, so there'll be no books on the.
There will be books that the high school and middle school students can share. There are some advanced readers in the middle school side, and then there are some readers at the high school side that also benefit from books that are maybe not at the high school. So that's why there was a shared section, and it'll be very carefully curated.
So what happens now with those kids that are, you know, that can read, are, are better readers than others? They do or do not have access to that?
No, those middle, those, it's, it's a high school-only book.
Okay, so where is the? Okay, so where is the book located now?
It should be in that far corner of the library.
The far corner, over there? Like on that big display there? I'm just wondering where it is.
The corner, on those, one of those two shelves in the corner.
No, I don't. I have it right here. Thanks. Anyway.
I, I don't know which of those two shelves, but it's in one of those two shelves.
Okay, so it's on the shelf over there, that's what I'm wondering. So there's no way at all that any child can ever go over to that side? That you're guaranteeing that?
And I cannot 100% guarantee anything.
Well, I mean, that's the frustration, I think, with us, because we have a shared library. When we had a discussion to have a brand new school, the biggest thing, the biggest thing was not commingling anyone. And that is what has been happening constantly. We've done it with the hallways, the cafeterias, the bathrooms, because the high school bathrooms are closed, so now kids are going to the middle school bathrooms to use the bathroom, the cafeteria, sports programs, so.
Where's the subject of the book, Wendy?
Listen, I don't know who you think you are, but you're always like yelling at me and saying something. Only the D E I committee can go away. Like, I don't know who you think you are. You've done nothing on this committee except for this. It's the only thing that has ever, like, got your bubble. That is it. Okay. You dress like crap too, on top of everything else. I'm done. No, all right, let's vote. I lose the vote, you guys win, that's fine. Let's go. I'm like totally shocked. Like, you think you can say whatever you want at any time. I've seen all of your emails, all of, I'm sorry, all of your, your little D E I with Heather, Heather Hagerty and everything. Your, how, what you're trying to do undercover, I've seen it, I've seen it, undercover you and your husband.
I make a motion.
I'm not undercover anymore.
I make a motion to recess.
Second, I favor a motion to recess.
I think I have.
I'm gonna call the meeting back into order after the recess, thank you. At this time, I'm gonna end the discussion on this and I'll be looking for a motion to, I'm gonna try and get this right here. A motion that will revert, to, in favor of the appeal to reverse the superintendent's decision to keep this book as gay as described. I will make the motion.
Will you repeat that one more time?
Yes, yes. The motion is made, the motion is to reverse the superintendent's decision.
Well, that's been a vote, though.
Correct. I will make the motion to put that to a vote.
To reverse?
Reverse the decision, sir.
To reverse his decision.
To reverse the superintendent's decision, correct. The superintendent voted to keep the, first of all, we're just trying, trying to get up there. But the superintendent voted to keep this book as gay in the high school section of the library, correct? So a yes vote on this will reverse his decision. So this, the motion is to reverse, is to, is in favor of Mrs. Ballner's appeal, maybe that's a better way to word it. So a motion in favor of Mrs. Ballner's appeal, which would.
Yes, vote or reverse.
Yes, a yes vote will reverse the superintendent's decision, no vote will keep his decision. So I will make a motion to, I'll make a motion to vote on Mrs. Ballner's appeal to remove the book. All right, in layman's terms, I don't know how legal this is, I'm making a motion to support her appeal. Her appeal will remove the book. If you vote yes on this, if we get to it, you will remove, you will reverse Peter's decision. I want to say, remove the book, you will reverse the superintendent's decision. A no vote will keep the superintendent's decision. We're voting in favor or against Mrs. Ballner's appeal.
Yeah, I'm yes. Confused.
Okay.
Can you say it all my time?
Sure. I am going to make a motion in support of, I'm gonna make a motion to vote on Mrs. Ballner's appeal of Peter's decision on the, on the book, this book is gay.
Are you voting for Peter or for?
I'm not voting for anything, I'm making a motion to get to a vote. So we can actually, because I feel we owe Mrs. Ballner, as part of our policy, a decision.
First, very much so.
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, so now it's been seconded, so all in favor of, all in favor of a positive vote for Mrs. Ballner's appeal, please say aye. If you're in favor of reversing Peter's decision, please say yes, or aye, or whatever you want to vote. Okay, all opposed to reversing Peter's decision, please say no.
No.
Do you, do you abstain, Wendy, or?
I'm like half a fifty-fifty, because it's the whole thing, it's like part of the middle school library, that's what's, you know, part, so I I just don't like that it's in the middle school.
Okay.
Part of the library, um, you know, so I don't.
I guess I'm asking, do you want to vote record on here or not for you?
Uh, yeah, can I fifty-fifty? No, I'll do that. Um, I will say then, I will support that decision.
Okay. Um, the appeal fails on a vote of four to one. Um, so the, Peter's decision remains in effect on the book, this book is gay. And that is the end of this agenda item. We don't need that, we don't need that, okay? Um, moving on, report of the superintendent of schools, we're gonna hit that next and then we'll get to the budget area.
So earlier in the year.
Yeah, just a half day.
So earlier in, at the end of last year, actually, we started talking about having a last day for students only, a last day of school. The faculty and staff would have a full day. The benefit of this is that gives the faculty and staff time to better organize, store inventory, materials and supplies when they don't have kids in classrooms. So I'd ask that we make this consideration now, so we have enough time, we should, we want to, or favor this to make sure everybody knows well in the dance, that the last day would be a half day. As it stands, if we don't have any snow days, the last day is June fifteenth.
Fourteenth or fifteenth, somewhere in there, yeah.
Which would move if we have a snow day, whatever the last, whatever the last day is would be that.
We wouldn't need to redo the whole green calendar, right?
No, just come up. You can post online, yeah, yeah. I mean, surprisingly enough, I heard from a bunch of parents, I thought this was a good idea last year. I was more surprised than anything about that. So, I don't know, is there any discussion, any discussion on this topic, any questions? Okay, I'll make a motion to make the last day of school for the 2022, 2023 school year a half day for students.
I'll put in that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? That is all set. At this time, at, I don't know, seven forty-one, seven forty-two, we are going to open up the public hearing on our fiscal year 2024, uh, public budget. Um, Peter, I don't know if it's gonna, you're gonna kick it off, uh, President Felicia?
Sure, I was gonna, I was gonna kick it off, um, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Felicia. You're gonna hear this a couple of times tonight, this is preliminary, which means exactly what it is, it's preliminary, because it's January and as we head to the spring, two things will become clear. The amounts of money that the school department needs to spend, and then the amounts of money that the school department will receive from a variety of different sources. So this is a snapshot in time as of January third. These things will change because this is preliminary. The reason I say that is, is because credibility is important and as things, things change, people need to know why they're changing and we will go through that as things change as we head towards the town meeting. Couple of things, um, we have had quite a few meetings just to get to this point. We've met with different building representation across the district. And those people have brought to us their requests from different groups in the buildings, whether it's, whether it's through school councils, PTOs, faculty and staff. And so this comes just from a variety of places. We've also met with our liaison to the town finance committee already, and it's Paul Hagerty. Appreciate the time that he's given us. We've met with the leadership in the town. Preliminary, we will continue with those meetings. We will also meet with the town finance committee. We also met with our budget and finance subcommittee. And that's Danielle and Hayden, thank you for your time. One of the things I want to start with is, and I promise I won't go through it, but I want to highlight to you the budget book. Because tonight, we're not gonna do a line-by-line coverage of the budget. We'll answer any question anybody has. If we don't answer your questions tonight, we're not going anywhere, we'll be around to continue to answer questions. So one of the good resources, though, in terms of questions, is the budget book. So in the budget book, I'm just gonna do the table of contents, so people know what's in it. There's the overview of the budget, there's the budget development, planning and article schedule, there's enrollment data, and class size data, breakdown of staff, preliminary budget proposal by accounts, preliminary budget increases by major category, budget priorities, staff and instruction materials, a budget, preliminary budget proposal document, and then different articles for the town meeting. And then all of that is followed by a line-by-line spreadsheet that breaks everything down. And I need to, um, give Felicia the credit, and she gets the credit. But I'm gonna thank Felicia for putting this together. I'll get the blame and she gets the credit. As we get into this budget season, each budget season is a little bit different every year. I just wanna hit some highlights for this year's. We do have class sizes in the low to mid. And when I say, when I say mid, that includes the number of twenty-six and twenty-seven in some of our upper elementary classrooms. But across the district, we have, we could always, we go as a better class size numbers, but we have decent class size numbers. This budget means that we may have to move some teachers from grade to grade, because we have different bubbles moving through the system. This budget, we have an increase in our number of students who are English learners. We have an additional forty students that we didn't anticipate this year. There is money in this budget to meet their needs. The Student Opportunity Act provides money for English learners. We don't know exactly how much money that is in terms of, um, that, that, that source of money. Nobody knows that will come well, that's coming soon. We are hopeful that that Student Opportunity Act will provide the funding we need for those English learners. We'll see that in this budget. We'll also see improvements in the area. I wouldn't say the improvements, they are what's needed to maintain our special education program, especially here at the, at the middle school level. Then you'll also see, um, there are a number of positions that we currently have that are funded by the federal ESER grant, which is that relief grant as a result of COVID. One of the problems that we see down the road is that we continue to fund positions through this ESER grant and that money's going away. That creates a funding cliff for us and it, and it's more responsible for us to try to capture these positions in our operational budget. So that we have an ongoing funding source, so we don't reach the, have a funding cliff from the ESER period, in the, in the period in which we get ESER monies are over. So you'll see that in the budget. We feel that that's positioning, we have new public schools in Abington in the most fiscally responsible way, and also meeting the needs of good children of ESER. And you'll also see in this budget that we're proposing an ongoing cycle for the replacement of technology, those are the laptops that our students are using. We want to do this incrementally, so that we're not hit with, with a system that's got technology where all of the students' laptops are eight or nine years old. If we do, if we chip away at this a year at a time in an ongoing way, again, it's a more responsible way to manage our technology needs. And with that, Dr. Mishell.
Thank you. So as Peter mentioned, we have a number of positions that we are proposing for the FY24 budget.
Felicia, I never gave the number, I'm sorry.
Yep, so our preliminary budget proposal is for thirty million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. And we'll go through that again when this all comes together at the end. So as Peter mentioned, we're requesting a number of positions. These positions are not in any priority order, except possibly the first two, but they're grouped by like positions. And as Peter mentioned, um, this is, you know, January, this is our estimate of, of our needs as of today, and they may shift through the budget process. So our first position that we're requesting is a middle school special education teacher. It's currently funded for this year only by the ESER grant. And that, um, excuse me, that position provides support for the special education service delivery model that they're using at the middle school for pullout for students who need small group instruction in ELA and math. The second position is a point four EL teacher for Abington High School that provides EL services, our instruction, to support our increased numbers of students that are English learners. This year, we had an increase of forty EL students across the district and this is a position that assists in their support. Additionally, a point five Woodsdale Elementary School EL tutor, English language tutor. And again, that provides needed support for the students that are English language learners. We're also proposing a Abington High School Spanish and Portuguese teacher. And that position would improve the high school program of studies by adding a second word language offering. Are there any questions on?
I still have a quick question for you, and you can probably answer for the rest of them too, because I know on the next page it's gonna be. So the first one, it's this year, right now, we're in, it's funded by ESER, but going for the next year, we would fund it without ESER?
Right, we did not, um, when we put the ESER grant together, we didn't anticipate needing that position for next year. So this is, so there's no funding in place for that position for next year.
Can I ask a question on the next page?
Yep.
Is that saying, and everybody will see these in a second. Okay, is it saying that these right now would be ESER funded for fiscal year twenty-four?
Correct, yep. So these positions, the second, third and fourth position, we do have budgeted for ESER for next year. But in, in our need or desire or requirement to be fiscally responsible, we're proposing that these become part of our operational budget for next year. And then we would use those, those ESER funds wouldn't go to waste, those ESER funds would be reallocated to other supports. So the, uh, we have a, requesting a point five Woodsdale Elementary School, school adjustment counselor. And I want to take a second to talk about the next four positions, which are school adjustment counselors. So school adjustment counselors assist us in maintaining students that are having challenges within our building. But those, uh, but those in turn, by having school adjustment counselors, working with students who are high-risk and struggling, also helps the students in the, in the regular education classroom by decreasing disruptions and, and disruptions throughout the day and distractions within the regular education classroom. So it is, uh, these positions, while they are, you know, focusing in on working with students who are having behavioral, mental health needs, they also help the overall culture of the building in each classroom. So a new position that we're requesting is a half-time school adjustment counselor at the Woodsdale School. And then we have a half point five high school school adjustment counselor, a point five middle school adjustment counselor, and a one, a full-time Beaver Brook School Adjustment Counselor. And you'll notice that the high school adjustment counselor and the middle school adjustment counselor, the half point five of their positions are currently ESER funded. And the other point five that makes them a full-time position is already in our budget. The Beaver Brook, again, um, half, that's half, is also funded in our budget and we're looking to make that a full-time position. Are there any questions on this, on these positions?
Excuse me. I have a question.
Sure.
So how, like, do you know, is, I'm sure there's not an answer, but do you know why suddenly, within just like the past two years, we need adjustment counselors? Like, what is happening with our children? Like, what is happening with our children? Is it the schools? Is it home? Is it like the television? I don't know what it is. Like, why, why suddenly do we need?
Well, I think our, the needs have increased post-COVID. Part of the ESER grant was to address the social-emotional needs of students and School Adjustment Counselors, meaning how they're coming to school prepared. Behaviorally, socially, and we have had School Adjustment Counselors in the past, not this many.
Right. It, it just concerns me because I feel like we've kinda shifted from actually reprimanding children and then like doing the whole social justice thing, and maybe that's where the behaviors kinda are making the kids different. I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there. I have no idea.
I think part of it is that we're dealing with collective trauma from the past couple of years, and kids have been suffering a little bit, so we're just trying to take care of them.
So, and also the student, I should also mention the Student Opportunity Act, Yeah. which is another way that we're getting funding through our Chapter Seventy state funding, is, part of that is for special education, English language learners, homeless, low income. So, that's a, that's an additional funding source that is addressing some of this as well. Peter, did you have something?
No, I was just gonna say, we, you know, we, schools needed this before COVID. COVID made it worse.
So we also have other positions that we would like to have that would be great for our district, but they're not a priority for this year in our budget. And that includes a point four wellness teacher, an additional, additional EL teachers, a Portuguese translator, and administrative assistant, a high school English teacher, an additional art teacher, and a shared nurse. So again, those are positions that we would like to have as a district, but they have not risen to be a priority in, in our budget proposal for this year.
If, if we grew that money tree that Danielle talks about, the art teacher and the shared nurse, if those ever did come to the plate, where did you envision?
So the shared nurse, the vision for a shared nurse would be, they would float between all the buildings as needs arise. And the art teacher is a secondary art teacher position. So next, we have our increase by major category page. Now, these are the increases to our FY twenty-three budget. Our increases to this year's budget. So, our first is contract, is our salary account. And our salary account goes up based on collective bargaining agreements and new positions. So contractual obligations, we anticipate going up one million, sixty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars. And our new positions that we just spoke about, we budget for an average teacher's salary. Some come in higher, some come in lower, but we, based on our average, we anticipate three hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars in new positions. For a salary count, increase of one million, four hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Our second category are programs with other districts. We anticipate our special education tuition to go up three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. Those are students, tuition for students who go to school outside of the Abington Public Schools. I should also note that the Operational Services Division, which is a division in this, in the state government, sets the rate for private special education tuitions. And this year, they've set the rate at a fourteen percent increase, which is for our private tuitions, which is a very significant increase. And so that's for that increase. It's a built-in increase for students who go to collaboratives. And it also, right now, in January, Dr. Robbins sits and looks at all of the students in different placements and tries to make a determination of where they, where they will be going to school next year. And there, so that's an area that, as we get closer to the, to town meeting, we may be able to go up or down. We hope we go down in our, this is a conservative number for tuitions. Circuit Breaker is a reimbursement program through the Department of Education. And for all of our students that go out for out-of-district special education services, the Town of Abington, the school department is responsible for the first approximately fifty thousand dollars of the students' tuition. And then we get a reimbursement rate, reimbursement from the state for any amount over fifty thousand. So this is based on getting seventy-two cents for every dollar that we spend over the fifty thousand dollars. And we anticipate for next year that our Circuit Breaker offset will be two hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars less than it was this year, which then makes our budget go up.
Is there reasons less?
Um, part of it is the, part of it is the threshold going up every year. And we have built some programs within the district and brought students, so the good news is we've brought students
Okay.
from out of the district back into the district.
Okay.
That's good for us, but it decreases our circuit breaker.
Does that fifty thousand dollars threshold ever change?
It does. It goes up, it goes up every year. It's based on, it's based on a percentage, or your, it's a formula of the average per pupil expenditure across the state. And so they use that, that threshold, and it, it does increase two thousand dollars-ish. Yeah, it's about, it's about forty-nine thousand, eight hundred this year. Other school services, transportation, or anticipating in transportation, regular education transportation contract will go up fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And special education transportation to go up forty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars. I should note that we go out to bid for special education transportation, and I think Dr. Robbins will attest to the fact that we are paying a lot more for special education transportation this year than we have seen in the past. So we're anticipating other school services to go up a hundred and three thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars. Technology and instructional materials, as Superintendent said, that we are looking to get into a regular laptop replacement program. And that would be two hundred thousand dollars to replace, to give fifth graders new laptops and replace ninth graders' laptops. So students would have laptops for four years, and then at the end of the four years, when we collect those laptops, we evaluate them, we cannibalize those that need to be cannibalized and use parts to do repairs. And all of the laptops that are in very good repair then get brought down to grades K through four, and each classroom has a classroom set of laptops to be used within their classroom. Five through twelve have one-to-one that they take home, and the elementaries have classroom sets of laptops. And we have an increase in instructional materials of forty-nine thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars. For a total of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollar increase in technology and instructional materials. For a total increase of two million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars, or eight point five-five percent. And as I started with, our preliminary budget of thirty million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. Yes?
To make insurance on the laptops?
We, the, insurance, no. We have warranties and we have, we actually have someone who's certified to fix them within the school. One of our technologists is a certified repair person, so we buy the parts and we do the repairs, if, if they can be repaired.
We should say our students are fairly responsible.
Yep.
They are. I mean, that is perfect.
I know.
Our kids are pretty responsible with the technology.
The difference between insurance and then a parent having to pay, you know, maybe four hundred and fifty dollars to make more insurance.
Our students are really good, and most of the fixes are things that would happen to a computer that are used every day for seven hours a day by a fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-old. There are times that there's some disruption that you can, that there's a feeling that it was done maliciously, but that's very
We did put that into policy, did we?
Yes.
Last year?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, we did.
Before I hand it to the committee, I just wanna ask if anybody in the public has any questions about the budget as presented. You can drop them to me, but I'm probably gonna defer you to Dr. Michelle if you do. Does anybody in the public have any questions about the budget that was presented?
I just, I have one last question.
Go ahead.
I know all of these funds are not certain, so do you have a contingency plan for what would be cut or eliminated if you don't get the funding that you need? Or is that up for discussion, that, you know, if it happens?
This is our preliminary budget proposal. Between now and town meeting, which is the first week, the first Monday of April, we'll have, hopefully, a clearer picture of what the funding will look like, both at the local level and the state level. And we hope that this becomes our budget. And if it, if we do need to make adjustments to that, it'll be a discussion with the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, with our administrators, and then with the school committee.
You, you start to put that plan together when the clouds start to form, because once you do that, you can start identifying who people are, and it's pretty emotional, so we, we've done that before, but you, we really wait till if you, you do that if you have to.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Nicole.
What's, what's a shared nurse? Is that shared among all the schools?
Yes, but, yes, the proposal would be that we would hire a nurse that would be available either to assist at schools that are having, you know, more challenges at a specific time, would be a nurse that would be a substitute if somebody was out, and to help with screenings, to help with evaluations, but it would be shared among all the schools.
One more, a wellness teacher, is that different than like a health?
That's a health and phys ed teacher.
Okay.
Somebody who teaches both of those is a wellness teacher. Great question.
It is on the ESER, there are two positions that were ESER-funded. If we were, if you were able to bring those into the budget, how would you reuse those ESER funds in the district?
We would have to sit down and be strategic about it. We don't have a plan for that yet, until we know what's available. But we, we'd have to, we, we try to use them the same, in the same philosophy that we're, that we're using the funds now. For example, all of those summer programs that we had for kids, they were academic, they were music, they were sports, to get kids, you know, doing normal, healthy, routine type activities were ESER funds. We wanna try to use the funds in a way that is true to the spirit of the way the money's intended and document that, because that's how we stay out of trouble, and yet not create that cliff by hiring a third-grade teacher, because it'd be great having a third-grade teacher, but they wouldn't be there long.
So this budget goes around trying to avoid that cliff?
Yes.
Trying to.
Thank you.
Anybody in the committee, I know we've asked questions, if you've gone along, and anybody have any other questions?
We do currently have one for nurse too, right? No?
No.
Do we have a shared?
We have a job share.
A job share?
Yep. So both are point five, or half.
That I knew. Somebody's gonna thought they had somebody else who needed help as well.
So through COVID.
We had, for a little bit.
We had some more flexibility to be able to have additional nursing hours
Okay.
as needed.
All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else on the committee have any other questions about the budget?
This, so there'll be, there'll be three, so, and if you go to the back of the pack, we're gonna have three motions. It's on budget as it is. Oh, yeah, and we're back into regular session. The public hearing is now closed. Thank you. Also, a motion for out-of-district transportation and for the tobacco, that revolving tobacco fund. So those will be the three motions we have right now, one at a time. So I'll be looking for a motion to submit for the annual town meeting warrant, a proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget figure of thirty million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars for the school department's operating.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Um, the second one, I'm looking for a motion to submit for the annual town meeting warrant, a proposed figure of sixteen thousand, sixteen dollars for student transportation services to Abington students attending out-of-district vocational schools as non-resident students for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. The school committee or their designees shall be authorized to expend from this fund or act on anything relative thereto.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. And the last one, I'm looking for a motion to submit for the annual town meeting warrant, an article to continue a revolving account in accordance with Mass General War, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three E, one and two. Set account to be funded by the fines levied against Abington businesses which violate state or local tobacco control laws, bylaws, and regulations to be expended by the Abington School Department to fund substance abuse prevention programs, not to exceed eight thousand dollars for the ensuing fiscal year, or take any other action relative thereto. Is it for the town hall? Is that part of it?
No.
Okay.
My fault. Sorry.
That's okay.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Um, before I move on to the capital plan, I just wanna take, I wanna thank Danielle and Heidi being part of the subcommittee who come through this. I know the meetings can be whatever. I know a lot of them took place during Christmas vacation, so thank you for that. Paul Haggerty, thank you for your time with the finance committee, being our liaison there, so I appreciate that. And I'll kick it over to you for the fiscal year twenty-four capital plan.
Great. So in your packet, you have a copy of the FY twenty-four capital plan. Yeah, I'll go through those items. This, I should also mention that this year, the Town of Abington engaged with the Collin Center, no, is it Collin Center, UMass, to do a comprehensive capital plan for the town. So you'll notice on the capital plan this year, there is a, a number of them, of the items are italicized, and they are currently on the preliminary FY twenty-four town capital plan. So, we'll, I'll address those when I get to them. So, the Woodsdale School, roof replacement at the Woodsdale School. We've talked about this, and as I've said before, it is kept watertight by the good work of Jason Lynn and our roof contractors. So, that is something that we still, we do need a new roof, but we are continuing to keep it how it needs to be and tight. Refurbish the walk-in cooler and freezer at the Woodsdale School and replace cafeteria furniture at the Woodsdale School. So, right now, the refurbish of the walk-in cooler and freezer is currently on the town's preliminary FY twenty-four capital plan. Beaverbrook Elementary School, an assessment of the entire HVAC system for possible replacement. So that is also on the town's capital plan. We're looking to have a, a engineer come and do an assessment of not just the boilers, but the boilers, all the piping, the univents, and, and make some recommendations for that system. Resurface the, all paved areas around the Beaverbrook. Update the playground equipment for two hundred thousand dollars, replace cafeteria furniture at forty thousand dollars, and resurface the gym floor, including the lines and logos. And that is an item that is on the town's capital plan. That's for the bar gym. That gym. Two. Sure.
I just, this is more for, so the playground equipment, when it mentions Beaverbrook, is for the playground equipment behind the school, not the the replacement for the wooden playground is its own thing done by the town, so just, so there's no confusion as to we're not, we didn't, that money, this money is not for that playground.
Thank you. And the Frollo School, replace antiquated main electrical switch and electrical subpanels, forty-two thousand. Replace the fire, one of the fire escapes for thirty thousand, and build an exterior ADA compliant ramp in the front of the Frollo. Those three items are on the town's capital plan. We have talked about ADA and handicap access to building. Um, we have talked about ADA and handicap accessibility at the Frollo for a number of years. We had a town meeting article probably six years ago for the possible replacement of the garaventa, which is the internal kind of chairlift. And after many meetings, engineering studies, it was determined that that was not a feasible solution within the Frollo. And, uh, working with the town manager, Scott Lannister, um, the money that was set aside originally for the Frollo garaventa, or ADA compliance, um, was used to do a, to, uh, do a, um, an architectural study to build a ramp in the front of the building. Um, so this money, um, is to build that ramp. And the, the plan is to have a bricked-in ramp that goes in, up onto the, um, middle floor. So the middle floor would be, um, handicap accessible. The gym, the floor of the gym, the middle floor. And that is also on the town's capital plan.
Does our capital plan, how, when we submit it, does it include the stuff that's on the towns as well?
Yeah, I, I, I would like to submit this as is.
Okay, okay.
Acknowledging that those are some of the items that the, that the town, that there are a number of items that the town hasn't identified through, we met with the, um, with the UMass Collin Center when they were developing, uh, um, capital plan as well. We had input into that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Michelle on the, um, on the Frollo twenty-four, fiscal year twenty-four capital plan?
Of course.
Go ahead.
No, do we just have a standing, um, request for, with the MSBA about, like, this is a project we wanna do, or do we have to submit within a particular timeline?
We have not done the, an MSBA submission for the Woodsdale Roof. Um, if that's considered a green repair project, or, um, they do, uh, shorter timeframe for windows, doors, boilers, and roofs, we have not done that in order to, um, submit application. The town and the school department needs to be ready to make the commitment for a new roof. And at this time, although we've talked about needing a new roof, I'm not sure we're at the place that we're ready to make the commitment to put a new roof on right now.
Okay.
Because we are able to repair it. There will be a time when we cannot, when we can no longer repair it, but I don't ever want that to be a surprise to the community or to the school committee that we need a new roof.
As well as things where you need to get the approval for it first, then you can kinda submit the?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
Are there any other questions from the committee?
So this, the Woodsdale Roof's been on since two thousand and fifteen.
Yep.
Every year on the capital plan, it's still holding up well?
It, it is, and every time we have it repaired, they say you need a new roof.
Good.
Um, and they're able to make the repairs. Uh, it's a rubber ballast roof, so a rubber roof starts to disintegrate. And so, uh, they are making the repairs, uh, to the disintegrating rubber. But at some point, we're gonna need to invest in a new roof.
So is that going into the ceilings at all though?
No.
Okay.
They're, they, uh, and if they are, we're replacing ceiling tiles and, um, we've had the, the place actually right now that we have some weeks that we have had more recently are in the boiler room.
So what's the, like, um, how much have we invested in this since two thousand and fifteen? Is that comparable to getting a new roof?
No.
Okay.
No, no.
Good question.
That's a good question.
Um, the other one was the assessment of the HVAC system. Um, I know that that boiler is older than dirt. Um, but with that sort of assessment, would they potentially have any sort of recourse for maybe putting in some sort of climate control? Or is that just all contingent upon what they come back with?
Another really good question. Um, we're starting to see the HVAC system at the Beaver Brook have some significant challenges. Steam leaks, um, for one, that are, we're out, to use Jason Lynn, who's the director of management, constantly chasing steam leaks, um, which make for a very inefficient system. So, and we have piping under the concrete slab the school's built on, so they've had to chisel through concrete to get to piping. So, um, the, the assessment that we would have done would, would be a whole assessment from boilers to thermostats and everything in between. And I would then assume that we would then have a proposal for different costs. You know, if you wanna, if you spent this much, you could get this. And if you spent this much, you could get this. And then that would be a decision that we'd have to.
So down the road, do you think that's something that could also be eligible for a cost share if and when we got to the point?
Great question. So this is the Mass School Building Authority, cost shares with things within the boiler room. So if we needed to replace our boilers, they would cost, they could potentially cost share on the boilers. But they do not cost share on anything outside of the boiler room door. So, no.
How many boiler rooms have you caused?
Yeah.
I'm trying, Peter, sorry. I just have a question about the steam leaks. What does that mean, like, can anyone get hurt from that?
No. No, good question, though. There, we have tunnels underneath the gym floors, there's, and when there's just, it's a pressurized system. So the steam leaks, um, have been in the boiler room, for example, they've been under the gym floor, um, or within, um, not with, maybe within a univent, but it wouldn't, it would be contained within the, the cabinet of the univent.
Okay. I'm sure what that means, but, okay.
Sure, it's a good.
Are there any other questions? Okay, at this time, we're looking for a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-four capital plan as presented and submitted to Town Hall.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Can I add one other thing?
Yeah, yeah.
Just informational.
Yeah.
Um, beginning next week at the Woodsdale School, um, we will be, students will be assigned lunch numbers again, like they were when we first started this at the middle high school. Students are, have, use their lunch number when they go through the line. And at the Woodsdale, that's gonna begin next week. Um, students will be getting their numbers, um, I think towards the end of this week. And then they'll have, they'll be putting, inputting their four-digit code to get breakfast or lunch. So we can anticipate lines being a little bit longer, um, while get students to get used to that. And then we, pre-COVID, students at the Woodsdale, um, were fine doing, um, their four-digit codes, but it just takes a little bit of time. And then we'll be rolling it out for second graders, um, at the Beaver Brook and like coming along ourselves. Thanks.
Thank you.
Because we have to.
Because we have to.
So new business establishing next school meeting date. After five-to-six week breaks the last few times, we're back in three weeks. Uh, Tuesday, January twenty-four, twenty twenty-three here. Um, some dates to remember. Saturday, January seventh, uh, Abington Education Foundation has their biggest fundraiser of the year, their trivia night, Abington Nights at Columbus on Hancock Street, beginning at seven PM. The next morning, there is a free veterans pancake breakfast from eight to ten AM at the American Legion, sponsored by the Abington High School Leadership Class Project. Uh, a constant contact should be going out tomorrow and Thursday on that as well. On Wednesday, January eleventh, um, AEF will be having their monthly meeting at Town Hall at seven PM. Monday, January sixteenth, Montlough King Day, all school offices and buildings are closed. Our next meeting on the twenty-fourth, and, um, Friday, January twenty-seventh, is a half-day for students, uh, full day for staff and professional development. Before we move on to the next thing, I just wanna call on everybody's attention to any informational items on the Personal Administration, number two. Teresa Minahan, Mr. Schaefer's Administrative Assistant, Executive Assistant for the Acting Superintendent, um, will be retiring, effective in March, but truly that's just some dates in there. It would be pretty much the effect of the end of January, correct? She didn't know this was happening. So I'm off the cuff right now, too. Um, so this will be her last meeting that she'll be attending, though. So I just wanted to acknowledge you for everything you've done, my six years here, incredible. Um, so thank you so much for everything. I know there'll be plenty of other, we'll see you the next, over the course of the month. I know this is the last meeting that you'll be at, so I just wanted to say that I'm sorry. You can tell me later.
We love you.
So. It's been twenty-seven years, and twenty-five of them I've worked with Teresa.
And she's still, no, I don't know what she's.
She's, uh, the successes, um, are due to her. She touches everything and sees everything in the other public schools. She, um, she, I started as a principal, you know, for, uh, seven years. I worked in that capacity, and then business manager, and then sixteen in this capacity. And, um, there's a lot more that'll be said, but just, I just needed to say a couple of things.
Been a great guy. I would never change a thing. So you wanna say?
That would be the one thing she's.
Again, I'm sorry.
So at this time, we're going, uh, by roll call vote, we're going, going to go into executive session without, I'll, I'll say this now. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to ongoing litigation, um, for, can we? Specifically, MCAD complaint, Adrian Whalen versus the Town of Abington. Since an open meeting, they have a detrimental effect on litigating position of the public body. Uh, for roll call vote, will not return to public session. I'll say yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much, have a good night.
You going in the other room?
Yes.